This is Hadley Housing Authority Order Commissioners, Special Meeting Agenda for 13th November 18th. It is 11:00 a.m. We're in the Golden Court Community Room. And so I'm going to give a call to order. And we have a guest with us today. Pamela, would you do the introductions? You don't have to turn around or whatever.
We should turn around so we could. It is our fee accountant, Michael Kane.
All right. And Mr. Kane is going to go through our year-end financials, Treasury Report, operating budget packet, et cetera. He gave us a lot of information today. There are no, that I know of, topics not reasonably anticipated. Do you have anything, Sue?
Nothing.
Rich?
Nothing.
We will be having some discussion, but it's not voteable and we're not delivering. It's just some informational things from our executive director and the commissioners' discussion. And so let's go right into the executive director report. Financials, Pamela.
I'm going to kick it off. Excuse me, right over to Michael. He has the year-end financial packet that he'll give you a brief overview.
Okay, well, good morning. Nice to meet you all today. So obviously Hadley, their year-end September 30th, and we closed all the books and we did all the year-end stuff. We'll be going over the year-end financials. EOHLC gives us a whole lot of paperwork, you know, 20, 20-some odd pages of stuff that we have to fill out and Pamela's going to submit after, hopefully, is their approval of them. But two things that you're going to be voting on today with the year-end financials is, one, the actual financials and where Hadley stands from an operating reserve. And the second thing is, there's this lovely top five form. Okay? And I wouldn't go really searching for this because, remember, remember, Hadley does not have any employees. They have a management agreement with Amherst, which means every single line item on here just lists a double employee on the top five. Okay? So once again, this is a form that EOHLC makes us do part of our year-end. Normally, it would list the five highest-paid individuals from a housing authority. But once again, Hadley has no employees, so therefore, it's just all zeros listed as no employees. So that's the second piece that you would be approving on. Part of the certification, there's a box that says certify to both. That, what that means is certify into the financials and the top five form. There's also a box where you can certify to one or the other or either. Okay? Any questions so far?
When we get down to operating budget, do we have lead paint and stuff like that to sign?
Part of, part of the certification is the lead paint at first and then the other certification is just the wage match.
Okay.
Which basically says, any employees that use the wage match certification, Pamela has a policy in place to safeguard all that information.
Okay, great.
Okay? Any other questions? And please stop me at any point in time.
Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
Okay, please stop me at any point in time. All right. So let's dive in. I gave everybody a little cheat sheet that looks like this. Yeah, Sue, you got it? Right there? Yep, okay. So as you know, EOHLC makes us prepare a bunch of forms, but we do this nice little cheat sheet for the board to make it kind of pretty simple on where did Hadley fall based on what we budgeted? Okay? And as you can see, the budgeted column, we had anticipated an operating reserve of $87,109, a 37% percentage for our operating reserve. Where we landed, which is the middle column, we landed actually at $161,020 for operating reserve of 69%. So that was a surplus of $34,594 increase over what we anticipated for the budget time.
So just briefly, EOHLC wants all housing authorities to have?
It's a minimum operating reserve of 35%. Okay?
And if you go down to 20, they come in and take over your operations, correct?
Now, I'm not sure about 20, but they will, they will, they will start, once it goes below 35.
They start.
They start their process. Correct.
Okay.
And they work with you to get you to.
Get you.
Okay?
We're doing really.
So something to know, you're doing really, really well here with, with a high, high percentage operating reserve there. With, which means obviously if something extraordinary came up, we have plenty of reserves to obviously take care of that right away. Okay? Any questions kind of on, on where you, where Hadley landed for the year-end financials? Something just to quickly know, we did anticipate in the budget, I need to find the page. And once again, no need to find in years. We, we did have apartment rehabs for non-routine. We estimated about $15,000 for budget timeframe. We use zero. We use zero. Just something, no, on big items. Nothing else for extraordinary or capitalized. Oh, we also had, I apologize. And Pamela, maybe you can help me out. But we did install a new boiler. New boiler was installed for $11,510. That wasn't on the budget, but we included it here. And as you can see, even with that large expense, we're still at 69%.
What change do you want now?
It's called non-routine. It looks like this.
And where are we going to find that?
And you're going, yeah. Couple more pages.
Why, why are you looking for that? It's not, or six, that, or six, one, zero.
Sue, got it.
The, the reason why we needed to pay for that and lead income through capital is because the Commonwealth does not allow carbon.
Yeah.
Items. And this is, it is a oil burner. So.
You got it.
Yeah.
We would.
Okay? Those are really kind of just something else to note. One other thing I always like to just point out to the board. If you want to flip back a couple pages, let's say about two or three, there's a, a report called the balance sheet. Sue, just go back a couple pages, please. One more page, go back, one more page, Sue. Fucking hell, are you close. Looks like this and it says balance sheet on the top. Got it, Sue? There's something else.
I am so close.
No, no, but that, here.
Go back.
Ready?
Go. Need tabs.
All right, go back one.
Derek?
Nope, sorry. Go back, yep. And one more, it should be one more page. We should have the balance sheet. Bingo. All right? And Rich, go back, go forward about three pages. One, two, nope. I don't think that's the balance sheet, one more. Nope, one more. We got it. Bingo, balance sheet. Okay? So one thing I always like to inform the board about is, where did the subsidy calculation land at the end of the year? Whether EOHLC or Boston owes us money, owes us subsidy when we close the books, or do we owe them money, right? Which means they advanced us too much. And if you look on, on account 2118, under accounts payable, you'll see accounts payable, EOHLC subsidy overpayment of $110,405. Okay? What that represents is, just obviously due to timing differences, but EOHLC advanced us more money over the last fiscal years than we needed or we earned during the year. All right? And in this case, what I always like to do to inform the board is, once again, is they advanced us too much money. Well, when we look, look on the treasures report that we send every month, just please note, when you look at the cash balance, and I think at the end of September, we had a cash balance of, let me find it, total of $422,000. Just remember, at any given time, we might be owed money or we, we owe them money. So in this case, if we owed $110, we really only have $320,000 of funds sitting in there that are really Hadley's. Just something, just to be aware when we close the books.
But that's already noted in that 69%.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay, okay.
But it's just, I, I always like to tip it off because some boards, like just in this case, let's say you had $200,000 total in the bank. And EOHLC advanced us too much of $110. Well, you really only have $90,000 in cash in fund. So we just want to make sure the board's aware of those numbers.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay? Any questions, Derek?
My question is, when you come up with a figure for the year because of something that's happening in our country now, like tariffs, are the tariffs, are they going to be looking into how the tariffs will be affecting the fee account and just running a housing authority in general? Because things are going to be so much, I mean, just materials alone is going to be so much.
When we go into the budget, Sue, I'll, I'll show you what they did. They gave us what, what a 5% increase on our expenditures outside of our utility expenditures. So they've increased the budget line ends by 5%.
So 5%?
Yep.
They're trying to know that.
Right. So every year, they, they increased what, what's called the ANUEL expenses. And last year was 12%, this year's 5%. So it's still increasing, which is a good thing. I know Pat and Pamela can speak for me, maybe. I think it's around, it was like, maybe around COVID time, there was actually no increase or, or a pause or a spare. It was only like 1%, but the last couple of years, we've had some really good increases. So that would be something that would cover the cost of, let's say, tariffs. Anything else on the year-end financial stuff?
Well, because it all boils down to the bottom line, how much we've got in the bank and what our reserves are. And so that's pretty clear.
Yes. Like I said, we're at around 70% operating reserve is a really, really good number.
We've got almost double the, the operating reserves that we are required to have. If it's 35%, we've got almost 70%.
Yeah. Yep.
Which is good going into the door project, having those reserves.
Yes, yeah. And it's good, we've come a long way. Remember, we were the red six years ago.
We were in the red six years ago on reserves and now we are very healthy. Okay?
Anything else? One, one other thing, just a note. And part, part of where Hadley ended with the 69% operating reserve, at the end of the year, we had to go back and kind of look at the billing from Amherst to Hadley. And part of that was, we went, we went back to assess it and some of that was underbilled by Amherst. So there is going, going to be an additional bill due to Amherst for this fiscal year that we already accrued in this figure with the 69% operating reserve.
So even after we pay Amherst what we owe them, we're still at?
We're still at 69%, which is very.
Which is kind of amazing.
Yeah. Correct. And that includes obviously partial of billing. As Pamela knows, I think you guys took over landscaping, which is obviously a huge additional cost for Amherst.
But it saves.
Oh, it saves.
Hadley enormous amount of money.
Right.
Is, is maintenance also going to be doing snow removal?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah. If we had more guys, we would, but the, the, the issue with snow plowing is it really becomes more health and safety. So you don't want a development or complex waiting.
No.
We only have three trucks with plows and you're spread out amongst three towns. You don't want folks waiting to be plowed out.
No.
It's just, so we do have contractors here, Belcher Town, and even at our federal properties in Amherst.
Yeah.
So that our guys can take care of all the other areas.
Yeah. Okay.
If we need to go on an emergency basis, we most certainly have the ability and the equipment or to come back and fix something that a contractor may not be able to get back to.
But, but conceivably, as, if, if the three of us get bigger, come together, maybe at housing authorities, we would have the maintenance resources to do snow removal conceivably, which would save all of the housing authorities a huge amount.
So we do, we make sure when we're getting in a contract with a snow contractor that we, we don't go by a yearly fee. Some contractors do propose that. They'll say, okay, just to have me on call is $10,000. I don't believe in that. I believe in when the snow comes, that's when we pay you for the work. So it's kind of a, you never know. It depends on Mother Nature. But it usually works out when you just pay for what, what they have. Sanding can kill you if you get.
Sanding can.
And just once again, the operating reserve being that high, if, if for some reason we do get some really bad snowstorms this year outside of the normal we had last year, we obviously have plenty of, plenty of reserves to cover those, those costs.
Wow. I have to say thank you, Pamela, because it wasn't that way six years ago.
Yeah. Yep. Any questions on that stuff? Sue, Rich, I'm good.
Nothing.
So is that the entirety of the year?
That's, yeah. It's entirety of year-end. It's right.
So you do, um, and prepared, um, she took from the, the, you have the board motions?
Yeah.
For the, for the year-end.
Oh, okay. So you want to read that one? Or we have to go down to the, because the first board motion is quarterly. Let's see.
So the quarterly and the year-end are really the same thing?
Correct. Because it was September and it's the year-end close.
Do you want to say it or you want me to say it? Or Sue can say it?
I wish with this move to approve the quarterly operating statement for fiscal year in the 9/30/2025 program 400-1.
You want a second, Sue?
A second.
And do we have to specifically say the year-end or does this quarterly thing?
I, I would just for.
Okay. So can you just say?
Or you can abort it.
Okay. I will move to men that we approve instead of quarterly saying the year-end financial statement. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. And so I will call for the vote. Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do we move? And now we're to, the Treasury Report is what's on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you have these other motions too, the law report and the lead paint too, so that we can fill out. These are year-end.
Also, they're part of the year-end.
Yeah, top five, too. You have been in the top five.
Okay, so.
Or are we?
You just say the year-end.
During the second one.
Do you say the year-end or the quarterly? Because that.
Say quarterly and year-end, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah. They're going to say.
I move to approve the quarterly and year-end consolidated modernization costs report for buried in the 9/30/2025.
You want a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. And then you want to do the next one? Rich?
I'm, Rich, with this move to approve the certification and of compliance and notification procedures for federal and state lead paint laws for fiscal year in the 9/30/2025.
Sue?
My second?
All right. I will call for the vote. Sue?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Rich? Motion carried. And the next one is the certification compensation certificate.
I wish with this move to approve the certification of the top five compensation for fiscal year in the 9/30/2025.
Sue?
My second?
I'll call for the vote. Sue?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Rich? All right. All done. Let's see. Oh, and the wage match.
Last one, last one, Rich. Last one. Last one, Rich, with this move to approve the wage match for fiscal year 2025.
Sue?
My second.
And I'll call for the votes?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Rich?
Yes.
All right. All done.
Man, chair, these require signatures. Yep, so Rich, if you want to do the, she's got to.
Yep, Rich, just lower the chair. Yep, right there.
Yep.
Making a lot of noise that he didn't give.
Remember that, the first one's the lead paint. Second one's for the financials and the top five.
Yeah. Oh, just second, I forgot about that. Oh, here, I've got another one. Go ahead.
So what we do is sign our own then, right?
Well, you're signing the form that's got to be turned into.
Yes, I uploaded. I didn't realize.
Oh, no, it's fine. This, this one's the, the lead paint.
Yeah. Yeah, just sign under Rich.
Yep.
And perfect, year under two.
Thank you, Sue.
And then it's just, it's just Reese.
This is already the check.
Oh, you can just give it to Reese.
Or just.
That's for the wage match.
Yep. Yes, you'll be up. Your end stuff. Thank you.
So and, and just to let you know, to the wage match, only myself and our director of lease housing have activated the wage match.
Right.
So it's.
And you both have trained in?
Were trained in that and all the data is.
Oh, so you already turned it back. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
What's next? Yes, sir. So you ready for the treasurer's report?
Yeah, ready? We kind of just went over it. I'm sure everybody has September in front of them. Total cash was $422,952.16. Just once again, it's just remember, $110,000 was obviously subsidy advance that we just spoke about. Total rent roll for the 667 was the $16,060. We have a small accounts receivable balance of about $1,800 there. Two vacant units at the end of September. For the 705 family, rent roll was the $10,476. Accounts receivable balance is $11,523.14. Once again, same number for vacant units, two. Small amount of laundry receipts. The laundry balance now sits at $2,619.68. And then you'll notice at the bottom on the modernization, the first line is just bills that the housing authority has paid. We're just waiting for reimbursement back from the state. And then the second line item is money we received from the state, but we haven't paid those bills yet. So once again, that's, that's another one, just to keep an eye on because we're going to be paying those bills. So when you're looking at the cash balance, we're going to be paying $76,000 out of something.
Okay.
Any questions?
I do, but I have to formulate it in my head first. Sue, do you have any questions?
Questions, or we owe them or they owe us. Is there a time period? Is there a timeframe that it must be paid by? Like six months, three months? Or is it just?
It's just normal, like a vendor invoice, right? I mean, the, the big thing is, and Pamela knows this, is for large contractor invoices, I don't know what Pamela's threshold is, but let's say it's over $5,000. You can usually wait until you get the money from the state to then send it out to the vendor, right? We never want to send money out when, oh my God, all of a sudden something extraordinary comes up in that, and the housing authority now, we don't have money to pay for anything because we paid this vendor, but we haven't received the money from the state.
Right.
Right? So usually what, usually typically, and Pamela, correct me if I'm wrong, is we wait for those deposits, then usually on the next warrant report, we usually cut the checks for those vendors to offset those.
Okay, I think I formulated. So I remember hearing from people in the state that statewide tenants in state-aided public housing end up paying about 75% of the cost of operation across the board. I'm not talking about individual housing authorities. So I was just curious, what is our percentage in Hadley between, you know, in our 401 package? You know, our, our program? How much of a percentage of the operating budget does tenant rents pay?
We'll go, we'll show the estimate on the budget.
Okay, great.
We have estimate of total tenant rent money collected. Estimate it, we'll go over that.
And then you can figure out the percentage because I can't do it in my head.
Yep. Okay. But, but, yeah. Any questions on the treasures report? Okay.
And that's not a voteable item, so we can move on to fiscal year 2026 operating budget packet. And there will be a tab in your binders to push right on over to the operating budget. Should be right there.
Just add your budget?
Yeah. There you go.
Okay. Seems good. Rich, right there. Perfect. Bingo. Okay. So this is the, the formal budget request. This is a summary of all the detailed pages below, which we'll go over the detail in a minute, which rolls all the way up. The left-hand side's the prior year budget, approved budget. The right, right side is the proposed budget that we're proposing today to the board. As you can see, line item one, right? We anticipate $275,000 of rents collected from the actual tenants. The percentage of, of total revenue is 63%.
How'd you do that?
Right there. Right there, I was ready for you. So just, just remember, you know, depending on the income and obviously the rent recertifications all dictates the rent received from tenants. So therefore, this one's a little bit lower than what you said. I think, what was your number?
Well, mine, that was the state's number overall, 75% tenant rent. Because a lot of people in the public think that when you live in public housing, you get it for free. We're almost free. And that's not the case statewide. It's 75% of tenant rents pay for 75% of the cost of housing, all the tenants in state-aided public housing. So in our specific housing authority, between our family and our elderly, non-elderly, disabled programs, the tenants pay 63% of the entire cost of operating the housing authority. And I think that's a wonderful thing.
Okay. Next item, which, which will go to the subsidy count. But if you look at line item 12, that's our subsidy of 154,498. That's what we're requesting with state. We'll go to page three, we'll show the details. And then we'll go through the rest of the details on the, on the next couple pages. But total expenditures that we have for this budget, But total expenditures that we have for this budget, which is line fifty-seven, is four hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and nine dollars, which leaves us with a small deficit of two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. And we'll show how that deficit really falls into the operating reserve in a couple of pages.
Okay, okay.
Okay, if everybody wants to just flip to page three of eight, so two pages.
Just wanted to point out you have new forms that are very crisp.
They are very crisp. We were having problems with the old.
Well, I know.
Okay, okay.
So my only thing is, please bear with me. I will try to get the even font even bigger on the page, but once again.
Because we're old.
No, 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 no. I've been, I just struggled a minute ago.
Okay, well, okay.
So the biggest thing for me is that obviously we want to keep everything like, you know, EOHLC has kind of in that model and try not to keep it on two pages so people are flipping back and forth.
Yes.
But this page came out nice. This is our operating subsidy calculation. You'll see on line three, the allowed loan increase is five percent this year. So that jumped up to the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand three twenty-three for annual expenses.
Okay, so we're on that. And you've got it? Okay.
Yep. So line three, line three is our total amount that we get allotted to spend outside of our utility costs, okay? Line five, we anticipate about ninety thousand dollars of utilities being reimbursed through the subsidy count. And then if you look down under line eight and E, or sorry, eight A and eight E, we get a four thousand dollar exemption for regional legal services from the state. Please note, if at year end we only have three thousand dollars of legal spend, then we only get to claim three thousand, okay? Right, we lose the rest, right? Or if we spent five thousand, then obviously we claim the full four thousand and a thousand dollars goes against the operating reserve.
I thought we got seventy-five hundred dollars a year for legal.
Not as a direct exemption.
Oh.
This is just a direct exemption from Boston.
I thought it was seventy-five hundred.
They did just make a change. This is the newest number though.
But I thought we got more now.
I'll double check. I'll double check when I get back.
On the EITC and all that, you know, they have the announcement.
Well, I know for the budget guidelines, what they basically say in the operating budget is whatever your direct exemption is for the legal service program, you should add another sixty-five hundred dollars if you have under two hundred units. So then it would be ten-five as a budgeted line item. I'm not sure if that's what may be.
That would account for it.
Yeah, because we use every penny.
Right.
We use every penny.
Okay, so still.
I'm sorry, yeah, and if it changes, we always can do a budget guideline too. Or I'm sorry, budget revision.
Budget revision, yeah.
And then under eight E for the direct exemption, and Pamela, I don't know if this was going to happen or not. You have until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And I really didn't want to get the board together for a five hundred and twenty dollar exemption for a budget revision. If HADLY was doing it. But there is a PHN notice out there where the housing authority can technically have a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration for the United States of America for the tenants. You have to have, I'm pretty sure you have to have a roll call with a sign-in sheet. And then if all that happens, I'm not, don't quote me on the specifics, but I'm not sure if there's certain days or certain stipulations that you have to do. And then you have to send all this paperwork to somebody, EOHLC to approve it. And then you get ten dollars per unit on whoever shows up for those units on those days.
We could card here with the American Legion.
Really?
That'd be good.
So once again, you have until June thirtieth. Not sure if it's going to happen. If it does, then we have it sitting there. And if we only use four hundred dollars of it, then we'll claim four hundred out of the five hundred and twenty. We use none, we claim zero.
Yep, RSC will be working on that.
Okay. So you'll see in line number nine, the total subsidy request for this budget is one hundred and fifty-four thousand four ninety-eight. Any questions so far? Okay. Next page is an easy one. Ready? Get ready to flip to the next one. This next, this one's just schedule of positions and salaries. As you know, HADLY has zero, so we can just keep clicking. Next page, we have the breakdown of insurance costs, employee benefits and utilities. As you know, the middle one, employee benefits, we have zero, right? Since we have no employees. Something to note on insurance, and Pamela, I don't know if you noticed this, but a PHN notice came out over the weekend for Brown and Brown. This was a shocker. Almost fell, I almost fell on my chair and I wasn't even sitting. Ready? Brown and Brown, and those rates are not getting increased.
Oh, good.
So two years ago, the insurance property rates went up thirty-one percent. I think last year they went up about eight or twelve percent. This year, they actually didn't go up at all.
Well, that's good.
That's real good.
So something to note there, we do anticipate, obviously, we had eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. So we'll come in a little less than that because we did increase it by about twelve percent for the budget purposes. Any questions there? Sue, good?
Good.
Flip to the next page. This is the most important page, right? Where do?
Background insurance, so under commerce, auto, truck, trailer, is that our portion? HADLY's portion of?
Oh, I might just have that in there because we had it in prior years.
We do, yeah, that's for your truck, which may be here we're going to talk about.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so HADLY's truck, yep, that's still there, yep.
When you go on expenses, it's higher.
No, but that's sixty-five hundred. They want your budget a minimum. That's not the direct exemption. That's what we're talking about. So what the budget guidelines basically say is you should budget sixty-five hundred dollars for legal if you have under two hundred units. Then if you're also getting the regional service program, add that amount on top. So that's a total of ten thousand five hundred we should have in the budget. And that's where the sixty-five or what was it, seventy-five came, was the next one?
Yeah, and that's regional legal services, that program.
Yeah, correct, correct. Okay, so the next page, which is six of eight, is the most important page, right? We just got done talking about year end. Where does HADLY fit in with all this, right? Well, with this proposed budget, with all the expenditures that we kind of just went over, and we'll go over a couple more in the VAC section. In that small deficit of two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars, where does that stand? Well, that means HADLY will still be at an operating reserve of seventy-three percent.
Okay.
Seventy-three percent, which is really, really good, right? It's even higher than what we had at year end. And you might say, how could that happen?
Yeah.
Oh, I love it. I was already.
You weren't ready for it.
So just look at line item number one. The operating reserve is always fifty percent of total expenses listed on the budget. So last year, we might have listed a couple additional stuff on the budget and expenditures that didn't happen or we had too much there. So when we readjust those budget numbers, obviously, total expenditures came down. So then the percentage ultimately went up even though we had a small deficit.
Okay.
Okay? Seventy-three percent, once again, very good number to be at. Very, very good, okay?
That's accounting mint right there.
I want to know the operating reserves every meeting. I love the operating.
So once again, if you look at line, I'll just mention one last time. If you look at line item number two, that's the minimum reserve of thirty-five percent, which is the seventy-six thousand one seventy-nine. And we anticipate to have a hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight-ten for dollar value at the end of this fiscal year. So really good.
And that's the one, the end of next fiscal.
Correct, yep, yep, which we're already in right now, but yes. Yep, at the end of September of twenty-six.
We're doing really well, Sue.
Doing really well, yep. Any questions so far? All right, next page. These are just extraordinary items, any capitalized equipment. We always, always list some apartment turnovers as needed, really for extraordinary maintenance. We have fifteen thousand set aside. If for some reason that fifteen thousand isn't used, it goes back to the operating reserve, right? So it could be even higher. Down at the bottom, we always list a couple appliances as needed. So we have a budget of about five thousand dollars just in case the housing authority needs some appliances. And then miscellaneous maintenance equipment, we have thirty-five hundred. So once again, if those aren't used, we'll obviously claim zero against them and they'll go back to the operating reserve.
Is this going to handle our situation with air conditioners and refrigerators?
Yes, okay, we just started.
Oh, great.
We voted for refrigerators, but it's only as they, the current ones break down or a new unit.
And just something to note too, depending on, let's say we budgeted five thousand for appliances and it comes at six thousand. Well, we probably wouldn't do a budget revision for that, but we would just show at year end, hey, we budgeted five, we spent six.
Yeah.
Right, but just something to note there, okay?
Because it doesn't meet that threshold in needing a budget revision.
Correct, correct. We try not to do any budget revisions unless it's really going to need.
Yeah.
Yep, all right. Last page of the budget is just some additional details of admin other costs. And just please bear with me here, is EOHLC makes us or requires us to give details. These are just estimates. Once again, they want to see how much possibly we're spending on telephone and internet, right? What's IT? One thing to note here, which we'll go over the management agreement. If you look at number nine, I know it's hard to see, but we'll go see it in a bit. But part of accepting this budget we have is AMERCE management agreement of the fifty thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. And we'll show how that's calculated below. The line item ten is the additional support for extra admin support that Pamela and her team do for the HADLY, so that's twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. But once again, these are just really detailed schedules that EOHLC wants to see the detail. The next section is maintenance costs. We anticipate about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for materials and supplies. And then same thing with contract costs. We have to list out kind of all the contract costs. One thing that I didn't learn about until this happened, but it's really not a big deal, is we had lawn maintenance of thirty thousand. Obviously Pamela and her team are doing that. So that will just funnel down to other miscellaneous contractors for that, for that actually account come this fiscal year when we get stuff. Any questions so far?
Yes.
Go ahead, fire.
Okay, so I think it would be helpful to remind us as a board what the management agreement contract pays for, what's included in the management agreement contract. In other words, it like doesn't pay for all this maintenance, it only pays?
Correct, so the management agreement contract includes, in this case, twenty percent of it goes to Pamela's salary.
Which is ten thousand dollars.
Only ten thousand dollars, so I'll give you the exact number. It's ten thousand and twenty-three dollars.
You are a good deal.
Right. So just remember, part of that management contract too includes the employee benefit side of Pamela's salary, right, which is usually anywhere between forty or fifty percent with a factor of what she's making, okay? And then the second half is obviously some additional admin support, right, from her end. And then, which also includes employee benefits. And then it doesn't include anything to do with maintenance.
So, okay, so that, so we have to get it in our heads that the management agreement doesn't cover any maintenance costs. That would be hourly and all that.
It would be technically, we have that if you look at that. We have it under subcontract costs, which is the forty-four-thirty account under line item eleven.
Okay.
We have management agent, contract costs, AMERCE building, we anticipate about seventy-five thousand dollars to be built to AMERCE, which is all the lawn care, their time driving over here, you know, use of the truck, all those things.
But also the maintenance people who come here to do repairs.
Correct, absolutely.
And everything, okay.
And just one thing, sorry to interrupt, just one thing that I think just needs to be really acknowledged is just remember, AMERCE is using their team, but their team also has employee benefits.
Yeah.
And those employee benefits are very, very high, right? They're obviously less than using subcontractors, we all know that. But still, at the same time, when we look at that, just remember, if a guy is coming over here and he's making thirty dollars an hour, well, realistically, he's probably making about fifty-five.
With the benefits.
With the benefits, so.
Because it is about fifty percent.
It's around four, it depends, well, the biggest thing is, I always say it's between forty and fifty percent because it depends on, are all employees on the family plan?
Right.
GIC, right, or and stuff like that, which can alter. But it's a very, very big number that the board should always be aware of that, hey, we're not just talking about a salary here, we're also talking about salaries and benefits, state benefits that they're receiving.
Then you have janitorial, then you have maintenance. Why have both if you're, if the maintenance is that, if you're putting the maintenance not under janitorial, you're putting it on its own line.
Oh, so you're talking about.
For janitor, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have anything. We have listed zero dollars there, Sue. Listen, but just remember, EOHLC wants to see some of the details of estimates of what's the makeup of contract costs.
But don't you think we should have some number on the janitorial? I know, because maintenance takes care of what's.
Maintenance, now we'd be under line eleven, which is the management agreement maintenance costs for AMERCE.
So if you remember back to the older forms, they all had these forty-one hundred. If you start throwing out those numbers, those are EOHLC budget numbers. That's not like a normal budget number, which is why a lot of folks get confused because, you know, Gary would say, oh, the forty-one twenty, and we're all like, what?
So that's what I'm trying, I didn't put it off. Maintenance costs is forty-four thirty, right, and forty-four twenty for maintenance materials. But I always now just on here, it's just really maintenance costs, right? What are the, its makeup of maintenance materials and supplies and contract costs? And just remember, AMERCE Housing Authority would fall under contract costs.
Well, I have to say, your particular form is a lot more readable and transparent for what it really is rather than saying the number of CPA.
Which, which part of the file, right? But you can, yeah, actually down in the schedule of all costs, he has that.
I have him next to it.
But we're required to use those EOHLC forms. He inputs it into the EOHLC system, that system. And then that's why I go in and send in all your certifications.
Sue, just to bring up another point on your question, right, is it's, there's nothing wrong with, let's say, janitorial, we have zero dollars in the budget, right? But we spend a thousand dollars on the outside subcontractor at some point in time. We have plenty of money under miscellaneous contractors or anywhere else exterminators, right? Where we have enough to cover that. It's just realistically, EOHLC just wants us to provide some additional details of, hey, what's the makeup of this account?
Yeah.
That's all.
Does that?
Does that help?
It helps, yeah.
Okay.
I just was wondering why, because they have had zero beside of being white, why even include it, yeah.
And then you'll see, and the last kind of thing of all other costs, you'll see line item one, legal. We have ten thousand five, and that was the makeup of sick day, day. They, per the guidelines, they suggest sixty-five hundred plus the amount that you're getting for legal service exemption, which was the four thousand, okay? We have a small amount of travel, hour fee, audit costs for the AUP. We have obviously the payment in lieu of taxes for the family amounts. And then we have a seventy-five hundred listed for collection loss if needed.
Okay, question, I noticed this when I was looking at it. We put back money on a yearly basis for a tenant organization that we do not have.
Correct, it just goes back to the operating reserve.
Oh.
So just once again, it's a formality for the budget because what if, so what if one organizes tomorrow?
That's right, so it doesn't accrue over the course of years. It has to go back to the operating budget.
Yeah.
From EOHLC's regulations.
Yep, so there's none, but we always list there because once again, is I don't want to have to do a budget revision for thirteen hundred dollars.
That's wonderful, okay. So if we're going to get an LTO, we better get a move.
Any questions on the budget so far before we move to the ED salary calculation and the management agreement?
No.
Good, Sue, Rich? Okay. So the next section is just, just please don't, right? Once again, is EOHLC provides us with this calculation. It determines how much HADLY would be paying for an executive director if there was one here, okay? And if you note, if you flip to, I think, the final page, the third page of it, you'll see that the total maximum amount is the forty thousand and ninety-one dollars, okay? If someone was here part-time working, that's those sixteen hours, okay? And now how that flows to the management agreement contract, if you want to flip the next page, it looks like this, okay? HADLY determine the management agreement contract is they take the executive director's salary. They say, okay, we have the forty thousand and ninety-one dollars. Okay, we're going to multiply that by a one point two-five percent, so we're going to increase it by twenty-five percent. And that's the fifty thousand one one four that we saw in the budget already for the management agreement, okay? Then on the second section, or the third section, I apologize, step three is really where it comes into what Pamela's getting. Since Pamela automatically has over five hundred units at her managing housing authority, which is AMERCE, she only gets applicable twenty percent of this management agreement, which we talked about a little bit ago. So what we do is we take the full management agreement, times it by the twenty percent. So Pamela gets the ten thousand and twenty-three dollars additional in her salary.
That's just amazing. But that's why it doesn't, that's the money that we pay for the management agreement, right? Or no, just for Pamela's salary, that's the portion of the management agreement.
Yeah, we only can give to Pamela. That's what EOHLC tells us and says, hey, when we do the executive director's calculation for AMERCE for Pamela, there's a section that says, please list management agreement contracts and their amounts. We would list additional ten thousand for her.
Oh, okay.
Which I get made one.
Yes.
Of the following year.
Yes.
I don't get that right, but I'm okay, don't worry.
You're okay.
I'm not complaining at all.
But the actual cost of the entire management agreement to HADLY, just the management agreement contract, is the fifty thousand something?
Yep, fifty thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay.
Yep. Okay? Any questions on all three things that we just went over? So once again, is you'll be voting on just approving the formal proposed budget. Then the ED salary calculation, which is obviously going to be zero, right? You're paying the ED zero, just the formality that you have to send in. And then obviously approving the new management rate to AMERCE for this management agreement of the fifty thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Do you want to say all that?
Rich is ready. No, he's ready.
He's ready.
The operating.
Yeah, you can read it now or I can read it from this, whichever. Yeah, yep.
The moving for good move, the proposed operating budget for state aided housing of the HADLY Housing Authority, program four dash one fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty twenty-six, showing a total revenue of four thousand, four thousand thirty-three, what is his name? Four thirty-three oh ninety-eight and total expense of four thirty-five three oh nine. Hereby requesting a subsidy of one hundred and fifty-four thousand four ninety-eight. And further than the executive director told annual salary of zero for fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty twenty-six, be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval.
Sue, you want a second? A second, all right, call for the vote, Sue? Yes, I'm a yes, Rich? Yes, so moved.
Madam Chamberlain, we do need, we do approve the.
The new management.
Okay, but we also have to do this. Sue Oppenheimer, do you vote? How do you vote?
Yes.
Reese Smith Green votes yes.
Yes.
Rich Whitkis votes yes. Okay, and so where are we at now?
We do have to vote for the management agreement fee of the fifty thousand one hundred and fourteen. I'm sorry, we don't, we didn't write it out. So if you just make a motion to.
So I'm going to approve the, say it for me, the.
The management agreement, management agreement fee?
Fee?
For fiscal year twenty twenty-six to AMERCE Housing Authority.
That's perfect. What he said, can I get a second? A second. Can you sue seconds? I'll call for the vote, Sue?
Yes.
Sue Oppenheimer says yes, Reese Smith says yes, Rich Whitkis is a yes. Then the next thing I show is a write-off report vote. Do we have any?
That's part of the certification to the budget, so Pamela will send around the.
Okay, you're right. Well, it's, it's, oh, okay. The write-off report is the last page with the pink sticky.
Thanks, Michael.
Yep, it's fine.
So if you've signed it, that's the budget.
Yep, and then make sure they sign the annual salary count. I know it's zero, but I think EOHLC is still going to kick it back.
Right.
If there's no signature, they just still.
They like signatures.
Yeah, yep. You want my copy? Yeah, it's only the chair. Yep.
So that's the.
You'll see it's zero. What's the date?
Eleven.
Eighteen. Crazy.
And today is?
Eleven eighteen.
That boiler must make you laugh.
I know, are we gonna lose a boiler, either that or our lives?
Sign that one and then pass it down to suitcase?
So that?
Then Pamela, you know, you gotta send it to the E O H L C, it was served.
And now we're doing attendance in Cap Hub too, which is no way to do an attendance, it's not P E F S anymore. So a lot of change just.
There's been a lot, there's, there's gonna be even more, yeah, they're trying to use Cap Hub, you know, kind of for everything now, but, um. There's this, well, software that the state has called, which is called Cap Hub.
So just, um, franking it here, I'm here and there, okay?
But it's just in case somebody's on vacation.
Yeah, we got until the twenty now.
Trying to get myself shorter, dead eyes.
Yeah, you know, there's target drills all the time.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
And now the, the next thing is the write-off report, we've got all the signatures done so far.
Yes, and this is, this is, um, the write-off report.
Right.
There are four hundred and forty four dollars for tenant, it was an agreed move out.
Okay, so we're, we've done these several times, so we're gonna, um. Okay, so you wanna read that, this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I recommend the pool, the pool to write off report, for nine one twenty twenty four. To nine thirty twenty twenty five, in a month, like four hundred forty four dollars, second name.
You want a second? I'd like to ask a few questions first, is it, is this a write-off permanently or just temporarily, until you go after money at a future date? This one is a permanent.
A permanent one? Yeah, yeah, we won't, we won't be going through collections or in the department forever.
Right, well, how would, will that be specified on write-offs that is a permanent write-off, or should say? Once in a while, you said you come back later and go after monies that are owed, is it, how do we know? If it's a permanent write-off, or if it's something down the road, you're gonna go?
I could, I could change the report to reflect that in the future, but, uh, that was a good question, so we'll just curate.
From the accounting side of things, sorry to interrupt, um, most write-offs are obviously, obviously final, right? We, we obviously reserved, you saw on the budget, seventy five hundred for write-offs, right? And obviously, if you don't have that much, then the rest goes back to the operating reserve, but they're usually always final. Yeah, usually what happens, well, from the accounting side, is once you guys approve it, we formally write it off, it's off the tenant ledger, um, balance in the reports. But let's say Pamela, in this case, wasn't gonna go after the state, say, hey, if this person was gonna get a refund, the controller gives us money. Then we'll obviously recognize as that rent received in that period that we.
They're just going to the rent.
You would go into the rental, rent collected, correct, yep.
And, and we would update that tenant, that vacated tenants account that we received one.
Yep.
Okay, but in this instance, it is.
Right, okay.
All right.
So that's all final, do we, you're welcome to.
Was there a vote for the, the write-off?
We need a vote.
Oh, oh, we need a vote, I'll thank Sue, sorry, and. I, Sue, second, yeah, and now I call for the vote, Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Rich?
Yes.
So that's it for our vote of the items. Now, before you take off, this is our opportunity, you all, to ask. Any questions of our fee accountant?
I'll say one, one thing, right, one of the things on the monthly reports that we provide, right? And, and just, this is what I tell most, most all of ours, just really, you know, obviously, you look at the treasures report. You see all, all the, you know, vacant units, tenant A R, right, the mod stuff, where our cash is. When we give you this secondary report, which looks like this, the monthly income, looks like this. Um, and the biggest thing, and I'll circle and I'll pass it around and just keep it, is down in the bottom right-hand corner. We have an estimated operating reserve through each month. So that's just something to always look at, so that's October, and you'll see it's at seventy nine percent. So, no, we had seventy three percent on the proposed budget, we're already at seventy nine percent one month in. That's always just a good key indicator to keep you always looking, right? It's not, it's not a big thing to say, oh my god, you know, we're overspent by two dollars on the other. We're underspent by five hundred dollars on contract costs, right? Um, when really, the operating reserve is exactly where you, you anticipated. Now, if, let's say the operating reserve falls down to like forty percent, that's when you probably has the board going, whoa. Where are we overspending, right? We can anticipate this and then start looking at the change there, but that's a good, really, just a, a formal thing to always be familiar of, and always look at each month. To say, hey, where's the operating reserve this month?
I will go back to asking the question, uh, that I brought up. Now that you're right here, okay, um, about. When I look at the management agreement contract, and that's only fifty thousand and change. And, but that can't possibly cover everything that. Is being done for Hadley by Amherst, just looking at the history of when we worked by ourselves. So I've brought up before about maintenance billing, and we've been working on that. To try to get more accurate figures in. So is that in process, and can we expect to pay more of our fair share?
Yes, yep, that's all in there, and that's, that's in your budget as well.
Yeah, we, we touched on that, yeah.
So, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, because we do have a little bit of a met administrative budget, um, that's built back. For the management monthly fee too, because it's my understanding, the way that management, under the guidelines, is you're paying for me. And you're paying for some administrative help.
Yeah.
Uh, prior to Amherst coming on, we had a very temporary property manager. So it pays a little bit of the property manager, but then in Amherst, we have a staff accountant that works for you folks. We have, um, the director of facilities who oversees maintenance, that's.
Right.
So we're billing for those items.
Yeah, that's part of the admin fee, but we have never really paid our full fair share of maintenance. Which is not included in the man, in the management.
It's, it's been a, it's been a tweaking, yeah, there's.
It's been, so we're tweaking, and we might have to catch up and all that kind of stuff.
And just, just something to notice, as the board too, is, um, I prepared a schedule, and, you know, if. Um, let's say, there was no management agreement for Amherst prior to that, right? You had an executive director's salary for sixteen hours, which is the forty thousand that we saw earlier. With benefits, that comes out about to almost sixty thousand dollars of, of an expenditure. You also had, you also had a part-time secretary person, um, that was about ten thousand dollars per year. Um, and then the biggest thing is, obviously, maintenance, when we talk about maintenance, is there was a part-time maintenance employee for seventeen hours. A part-time maintenance, uh, employee for twelve hours, the weekly on-call fifty dollars, which is really low. It's technically, most housing authorities are a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a week, and then you had some overtime reserves sitting there. So if you actually true that up to today's really value, including benefits, that's about seventy four thousand dollars. That Hadley would have been paying if those employees technically were here. Uh, so that's why in the billing, you'll see we build, uh, or anticipate about seventy five thousand dollars of billing back to Amherst. For those maintenance subcontractors, and that's where we kind of came up with those figures and saying, hey, what would Hadley be paying? If they actually had their own employees instead of, instead of Amherst.
Right, is that my question? We, we went from a executive director, director situation to an executive director, property manager situation. Well, how did that, other than a title, how did that change as far as, is the property manager cost more than the director? Or is it the same amount of money paid?
Sorry, sorry.
For years, we, when we were at the housing authority and management agreement with Amherst, we had a director. And an executive director, now we have a property manager and an executive director.
Wait a minute, you said before we had the management.
No, we had the management agreement.
Oh, so in other words, we had Mary Billion and, and then yourself, Pam.
And then we, when Mary was all over here, we went to property managers, which we didn't have.
No, we've always had a property manager in Amherst.
We didn't have him here, though, at Hadley, so what I'm saying, we have here at Hadley, we had director and executive director. Now we have property manager and.
No, we had, we did, um, we did have a, when Amherst came in, we had a property manager from day one.
We didn't have.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, we did, it's not about the person.
We've had several.
Yeah, I didn't even know we ever had one.
Yes.
Name people, employees.
Um, we did, but, um, so it's.
Yeah, there was a second position.
Yeah, so in, in a larger housing authority, um, you do have multiple layers of property managers and things helping. When I just worked in Belcher Town myself as the executive director, I had an assistant, but I did all of the work. Which is something I often tell my employees too, in a smaller housing authority, the executive director does everything. But now, that's one of the advantages of having a management agreement, is because you do, you do get an executive director who's overseeing. But you have other layers of employees, and that really comes in handy with, you know, maybe, maybe. A tenant doesn't relate well to me, but they'll relate well to the property manager or vice versa, a resident service coordinator. So there's a lot more people that can assist a tenant than just an executive director and two part-time staff.
And it's also.
But a property manager never goes to full-time in a house, in a housing authority.
No.
This size.
No.
It was, it's always kept two hundred twenty hours.
Right, even your executive director, your executive director was only seventeen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
So sixteen hours a week was your, your person.
I'm surprised that they never looked at that, I mean, that they wouldn't go the extra four hours, I mean. No, I can't imagine anybody wanting to stay.
Well, that's, that's, that's why, one good thing with Amherst and the, and the management agreement is. It's a lot harder for Hadley to find somebody at a twelve-hour maintenance position.
Yeah.
When obviously, Amherst has full-time employees, right? Now, now the drawback is that, oh my god, if, if Hadley employed a maintenance guy for twelve hours, they're not paying employee benefits.
That's right.
But, but now you have the resources of Amherst where you're getting everybody, you have people that are not gonna be turned over, they know what they're doing, they're very knowledgeable. But one drawback is, hey, part of that is employee benefits that Hadley has to cover, because now they're full-time employees on, on Amherst.
So that's the thing, is I don't think, and I've said this before, you've heard me say it before. I didn't think that maybe, uh, I mean, look at our reserves, you know? How are we getting, if we were by ourselves, we would never be above thirty five percent. We would have a hard time doing these capital projects without reserves backup. And, and so that's what I'm saying, so our reserves were, uh, before the, they got up to a hundred and ten percent at one point. Because we were going into a big capital project.
Well, and it was, and it was COVID too, there was a lot, there was a lot, yeah, so we were, we weren't doing as many, we're hoarders, folks didn't want you in the house.
Right, right.
And we weren't doing capital.
Yeah.
So.
So we got, we really are in an excellent financial position. Because of this management agreement, that's why I keep saying it, we would not be able to find an executive director at sixteen hours a week. Or a, who knew what they were doing.
Right, and they don't even get benefits.
And they, or even a maintenance guy, it, it's so hard for housing authorities to find a maintenance person. Even full-time.
Yeah, that's what we see.
Yeah, the, the other thing that is, is, is the burnout of the position too. So when you had that, that one maintenance man at seventeen hours, he was on call three hundred and sixty-five days a week, twenty-four days a day. Whereas now it's split up, it's still, it's actually hard for our crew, we, you know, we have five guys. And there's, they're like, every fifth week, okay, I'm on call, but it's, um, you know, and we do, we get calls in the middle of the night, we get calls on the weekend.
And they have to be taken care of.
Yeah, so it's, it, it's less fatigue on a bigger authority, you know, for the little guy.
It, it's almost like mutual aid between the three housing authorities, we all help each other, and we're stronger together.
Right.
Um, we're stronger together, and I think probably all three housing authorities are doing better financially now that we're all together, you know, that we're all together.
Yeah.
What also, also too, one last point, as I said, also helps the, the employees. Yeah, they, they now are secured a full-time position with benefits.
Yeah, which is hard to come up with.
That is what happened when we initially merged, I don't know if you, if you recall that, but we did have a couple of folks that were here in Hadley. I had a crew in Belcher Town that worked for me for five years, and they all became Amherst employees because they got more hours, they got benefits. And they got better pay, so it's, it did work, it does work, so. Just on paperwork.
Yes. It's a lot, but like, take advantage, you guys, we gotta take advantage of the presence of our fee accountant.
Oh, the big, big thing too is, anytime you need me here, I'm here for a board meeting, so if something.
You're kidding.
Oh, if you, something comes up, if you need me, yeah, of course, always, right? So if something comes up where, where, uh, you know, you're struggling with one of the, the quarterly reports or anything like that. Um, obviously, I'm here for year-end budget, budget revisions, all those normal things that we, we, we definitely need me here to explain. Go over, make sure that, you know, the board feels comfortable about what they're voting on, but if there's ever a time, like, you know, uh, another meeting, let's say, January meeting, where you say, hey. You know what, uh, I have a bunch of questions about some of the reports, just reach out to Pamela, I'll be here.
Hadley's a nice town, is it?
It is, it is.
I have one more question. When I, when we, I often bring it up during meetings, uh, when we have a repair on a truck. I think no matter what the repair, from the smallest to the largest, should be divided among the three housing authorities. Because our truck is used in another housing authority, their truck is used here, we can't decide, you know, which truck is used more for who. So I think the only, you know, fair way of doing it, so whatever the cost, if it's a ten-dollar cost or a seven-hundred, eight-dollar cost, it should be divided in three. I mean, that's something that I would like to see.
Like if Amherst has a truck where the engine blows, and it's seven thousand dollars to replace the engine, should we pay?
Well, I think.
Well, I, I would keep it simple, Sue, I would keep it really simple.
Or percentage according to how.
That's why, that's why Amherst already has kind of their percentage that they're going back with the stuff.
Right.
And it's gonna really, overall, even out across the way to make sure that everybody's satisfied. Once you go down that rabbit hole, I just know from my time in corporate, is that you need Pamela needs to hire one person. Right, to now track all these expenditures.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And for the, for the mouth to say, hey, our operating reserve moved one percent because of it, it's really not a value added.
Well, how could you see fairness in a housing authority where we're equally paying, well, of course, it's, they're using, um. The trucks much more than our small little housing authority, you know?
Because I think, I think on that, I would say is, is, yeah, okay, let's say Hadley's truck costs, you know, a thousand dollars, and we should pay, you know. We should recuperate three hundred and thirty-three dollars from somebody. I think the, the bigger picture, which, um, you can always lean back on, is you have Pamela's team and experts that come in here and help you. Right away on certain things, where if you had another employee here, that might not even get done, they might not even know how to do it. It might take them three months to figure out where her team can ta- tackle that right off the bat. So I would say that's more value added than saying, hey, what's three hundred and thirty-three dollars to Hadley's budget to recovering that cost? Does that kind of help?
Yeah.
I, I see your point, I see your point.
Also, if we're using, uh, we're using Amherst fact, so if Amherst truck engine blows. And we're doing, like you said, we've got that enormous expense.
Right.
Because it's.
And it's a small housing authority, you don't want that.
So it's the same sense, maybe it can come up with a formula according to how much each housing authority is.
And then with the, for the new management agreement is, is, um, um. Equipment, equipment charges now, so we are doing equipment charges, and we are gonna be talking about getting rid of the Hadley truck.
So we're not even having that.
Because, yeah, because the, it's not doing well.
Yeah.
But it would.
We just had a big expense, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And plus the insurance, the insurance is twelve hundred, we have about twelve hundred dollars just in the budget on insurance, so.
It's an old truck, so you just kind of need to get rid of it.
But we do, so we do have the ability, it's, what is that, um?
Uh, it's a municipal bid or something, I always say it wrong, but I don't think that's it, but it's something like that, where the, all the housing authorities can go on there and auction off. Uh, the trucks, and they usually have a very good rate of finding somebody, getting usually more money than they anticipated from selling like a, a vehicle on there.
And do we ever lease, do we always buy vehicles, we never lease them?
No, because lease would, is never, lease is never a good way to go.
I think, yeah, a lot of businesses I could write off, uh, vehicles.
Well, just remember, housing there's really not a business.
Right, we, yeah, we don't file, we don't file, it's not really a business, but.
Yeah.
We don't file tax.
We can't, we're a corporate.
But when we get rid of that, the Hadley truck, that, those funds that we get would come to Hadley.
Yep, of the operating. Yep, and just, and just one other point, just Sue, on, on there is, you know, you're, just one other take, you're saying, hey, can't we do a percentage on there? Well, what's the right percentage? Sue might think it's twenty percent, right? The, the guys might come up and say, hey, we use the truck seventy percent Amherst, right? Uh, fifteen percent, uh, Belcher Town fifteen percent Hadley, but is that really true and accurate? So it's really, it's really hard, there's a lot of gray areas there, and then before you know it, you're getting into something complex, where once again, is Pamela's hiring. where once again, it's Pamela's hiring somebody just to track to where the vehicle's going, so we can get reimbursed for it. And, and, and that's a lot of time and effort.
And it, it might not help anybody.
Correct, correct.
Just because you can track it doesn't mean you should, because it's not gonna help you.
That's what I'm saying, the grand scheme of things overall, is it really that much value added to see that number? When realistically, there's a good judgment of how all three housing authorities are operating, which is the operating reserve.
That's the best way to judge how, the health of the housing authority is the operating reserve.
Yep.
That's why I wanna hear it every minute.
Well, he's adding it on to the.
I know, I love it.
Yep. And same thing, if anything, please, any of our reports, if you wanna see something extra on the treasures report.
So you took Pam's place or you taking Gary DePace's?
Gary.
So Gary's retired and went and Pam's no longer working in Amherst, right?
Did you have Carrie?
Car, was it Carrie, the accountant?
Yes, yes, so we have a new fee accountant, he's been with us.
Oh, no, staff accountant.
He's here. Now, what's that, what's, I mean, what is a staff accountant?
They do mostly like bookkeeper?
Bookkeeper.
Bookkeeper, yeah, bookkeeping, payroll, um, those type of things where um, like is independent.
Where independent subcontractors.
He works for the housing authority, he doesn't work for me, he works for the housing authority.
Yep.
And he does all of the, the accounting, the real nitty-gritty part of it and the reporting and the budgets and.
That, that staff accounts can't do.
And who was the, what's the name of that new one?
Jonathan.
And he took Carrie's place?
He took Carrie's place, he's been with us since May, March, April, May, April, last month, yeah. Marchy, April.
Well, what I'm saying, just anything, if there's a treasure report where you wanna see something else, some sort of detail where it's gonna highlight, where it helps you guys, and let us know, because we'll add it there. It might, the, the font might get smaller. We'll add it there. We'll, 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 we'll add it there, that's all.
We're gonna have to give us.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you, everybody, it's pleasure meeting everybody, stay warm, all right? And like I said, have happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you so much.
Anytime.
All right.
I will see you Thursday.
I'll see you Thursday. Let me know if you need anything, I'll spend one.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Take care.
That was really helpful, thanks.
Anytime, anytime.
Okay, so we're to, uh, board correspondence, um, I guess I could leave that one thing I wanted to talk, okay? So, uh, I've been in email uh, back and forth with the chairs of the other two boards, Belcher Town and Amherst, and we agreed that being a chair is hard and there's all kinds of stuff coming out all the time from EOHLC and this new uh, board manual and stuff. And so we thought it might be helpful if we come up with like a, a subformat email or whatever, uh, where we get together and talk about how to be more effective chairs. And it's probably gonna involve um, evaluating ourselves, um, that kind of.
Just the kinda stuff I.
I know. Well, more, but it's not you, do see, we're not asking you.
No, I agree with that.
Like, we're not asking we.
She wants herself stuff to do that you don't have.
I have plenty of time to do, okay? But we wanna learn how to be more effective chairs. There's stuff coming out from EOHLC.
You're already a fan.
Oh, Sue, that's very.
You don't need to be more.
But I'm telling you, if you read that new board manual, I'm reading that thing, I'm only halfway through. And I read that thing, oh, we better start looking at our, uh, you know, evaluating ourselves as chairs. But, but anyway, and I would really like to share with the other two chairs, our code of conduct. They'll need to make their own and they like it, but it's, I think that code of conduct is very helpful and the evaluation tools I've been looking at are pretty helpful for chairs too, for chairs to evaluate themselves. But anyway, so we're, we haven't met yet, but we're, I just wanted to heads you up that we are looking at ways to chair more effectively. I am, and the other two chairs are too. Um, okay, so now commissioners discussion, um, I had a list of things, just to follow up on other things we voted on. Um, so Pamela, we, you, you came up with an ad, has that been sent to?
I unfortunately have not gotten contact with the town too, because remember, I.
Oh, that's right.
So, and it's not the town, it's me, I do need to get in contact.
Well, we did have to wait until they were through with that big town meeting, but that was tough. But maybe things have calmed down a little bit now.
Excuse me, I wanted to interject. I did find out that the senior center does have a bulletin board.
Oh, sure, yeah.
You know, where they list activities that are coming up, not just there, but activities in the community. And that could be a place to put, some retired person would probably.
We did talk to two retired people yesterday.
We did, we did. Can't say names, okay?
Right.
Um, so that ad, can, do we have a, can you foresee a, a date that that would be some, uh, worked at or figured out where you're gonna?
By the end of the month, at the.
By the end.
It will, it will go in the gazette.
Rich is very happy about that, I'm sure, okay. That would be my wish.
At the Legion?
No, no.
Is that why?
Rich wants to hang out at the Legion.
Not hanging out.
He wants to reach out. Okay, so the next thing, just to bring up, um, the, we, we had, okay, did we vote, do you remember, Pam? Did we, on the minutes, if you've done the minutes yet, did we vote to end that Home Depot account or did we say we could keep it?
Uh, we didn't, we didn't take a vote on it, what we said was that we're gonna be opening up the other, we're opening up a, um.
Okay, so I'm.
We did, we, we talked about che, opening up a checking account with debit card. Yeah, so we're, so we are in the process of doing.
Okay, great, great. Okay.
And we will close the Home Depot account and then the credit account.
Because they really charge interest.
It's, yeah, it's charged, yeah. There's no advantage to it.
There isn't?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the next thing is, do we have an update on the fridge and the AC votes? When are those things, or, well, you just said a while ago about the fridges, but what about those AC covers?
So the AC covers, I'm, I'm, I'm having.
Your trouble.
For Carrie. Who would have thought?
Who would have thought?
Yeah, me and all people, it, it, because everybody's got a different size. So I've got, I've been peering away at it, trying to get the right thing, but we are, we are working on it for sure.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about anything else so far?
Nothing you mentioned.
Okay, um, and the, the other thing is, um, and it might just be my struggle, but I am struggling because I really would like to get those board packets at the latest by Monday morning.
Your paper board.
We'll have them for you for Thursdays, the Thursdays before, when she's here in the office, so you could pick them up.
Oh, beautiful, okay.
Thursdays.
Okay, that sounds great. I have nothing else, does anybody else have anything they wanted to discuss or announce or whatever? No? No? Okay, so our future meetings are January twenty-seventh at eleven AM, April twenty-eighth at eleven AM, and July twenty-eighth at eleven AM. And I anticipate several special meetings coming in, so um, I have nothing else.
If this, if you find out about a meeting like the Ed Augustus meeting that happened yesterday, how will we let people know if you had such a short notice? Will we?
Yeah, I didn't.
In other words, how could we find out?
Oh, I, I can give everyone notice as soon as.
Okay, as, as soon as you find out about it, yeah.
It was, it was, it was actually, there were more people here than I had anticipated. I had gotten an email just that it, it was coming and.
Because I guess he's going around to each housing authority, right?
He is, from here, he went to Chicopee. Uh, he, I think he, he did Northampton, Chicopee, and then he was going to Pittsfield afterwards, so.
So he did four housing authorities in one day, that's a lot.
Yeah.
We have no one here for public comments, no members of the public, and um, so I, I motion, will you adjourn?
I'll second.
There we go, we're, we're done.